All right, it is Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three, it's six o'clock. I'm calling to order the Rutland Select Board. Um, this is a joint meeting for general bylaw review with the ad hoc bylaw committee. I don't think you have a quorum, Peter.
That is correct.
But um, we're here with Peter to review bylaws. Um, if we can, oh, we are being, we're live on Zoom. We're live on local access television and we're being recorded for re-airing on local access television YouTube and other social media outlets. If we can start with the pledge and then we'll get right into the bylaw.
My pledge in the United States of America. To the Republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I just hit my knee on the thing.
Oh, this is the worst, this is the worst.
Sorry, guys. All right, we can get going on the general bylaw review. I think we're looking to start in on chapter five, um, which is a lot of the boards and commissions and bylaws, I think.
That is correct. Uh, generally called multi-member bodies, councils, commissions, committees, boards, any multi-member body. And Tamika, I have something to tell you about the new website that's really screwy.
Oh, I agree.
Uh, so, start at the beginning with agricultural commission. So, this bylaw has a little bit, I hate to call it a story, but there is a little bit to it. We've had an agricultural commission bylaw since two thousand and six, there we go. Um, and several years ago, it it's always been based on chapter forty, section eight L. That's, that's what authorizes the town to form an agricultural commission. Several years ago, eight L was amended. And so, the agricultural commission wanted to fully have all the powers granted by eight L. So, we reworked the agricultural commission with all those powers built in. Do you remember all of them? No, but I think I remember the the biggest parts. So, this is not subs. It is consequentially different from the current bylaw, but it's not hugely out of bounds different. It's just, it lists the new powers granted out of agricultural commissions.
I have a question, Peter.
Yes.
Can you remind me, I vaguely remember some of this conversation at the town meeting when it was establishing the the fund and everything. Um, was there anything that the town needs to vote on in, when MGL was updated, that the town needed to vote on to authorize those powers? Or because we've already adopted it, it stands?
And the fast answer is that the town has already, at that meeting.
Right.
Adopted the latest version of eight L.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I.
Yep, you're correct.
I wasn't sure if there were other pieces of eight L that.
Now, i- in fact, at that, I'm not convinced that was strictly necessary. Because we never, well, it's a little vague, in fact, we should probably change it as to say as amended. Um, or at sec, or there's a, just some Latin we can put in there to say, and however, it's modified in the future. So that we don't have to keep modifying it.
In general, and I think this is a comment for most of the the bylaws that reference MGL. Is there a way to somehow do it kind of across the board? I think this is one of the ones that has been updated more recently, but I know that that was some of the conversation is constantly referencing MGL. And then if MGL changes or is updated significantly, um, how that works, whether the town has to readopt or update bylaws or something.
Yeah, that's not really clear, uh, let me think about that.
Sorry, I meant to ask it.
No, no, it's fine, it's a, it's actually a good question. Okay, in fact, since I'll be talking with the town council soon anyway, I can ask that specific question. Be good, uh, if I can just put one thing in the general provisions, that would be awesome, but if I can't.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, now, I will note that our authority is both eight L and the Home Rule Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution. Cause there are things that we do that are not exactly the same as general laws. I'm gonna get to one of them right away, membership. This is substantially the same as it is right now. That is to say, it's five members and five alternates, and a minimum of three have to be engaged in agriculture. Appointed at staggered three-year terms and often the members appointed to one-year term. That's, those are all elements that we have today. But, if you read Mass General Law eight L, there is no mention of alternate members. I had a couple of discussions with town council about this and the end result is because our bylaw existed before the latest, before the um, the latest amendments to state law. We're grandfather, alternate membership is grandfathered in. So, we are not losing alternate membership. Yes?
What's the purpose of having alternate members?
So that if a quorum can't be reached, you still can still make a quorum with the alternate members. That's all they do is they just fill the seat when there's, when they don't have enough to make quorum.
It's, it's interesting because this is only board, like board or commission that has this, this, this many.
This many, yes.
Yeah.
Do we actually, does our agricultural commission have five alternates and five members?
No.
Tamika, do you know?
We only have two, right, two alternates right now.
Right.
We have had years that we've had all five alternates filled. Um, and generally, they're people that show up to, were showing up to most of the meeting. You know, this, I, historically, this commission, whoever seated when they do meet seems to be in attendance, whether they're alternates or um, the fully seated members. Um, but the dynamic is, has always been interesting to me, that it's so many.
Hmm.
Alternates.
Yeah.
Which, and that may simply be historic for the number of farmers that we had in, what do you, ever year this is adopted.
How do they?
Or past farmers.
How do they choose, if they need an alternate, how do they choose which one sits in?
They're all one-year membership, they're all equal, they can, there's no guidance on how they select which alternate sits.
Interesting.
And I don't, I, I'm, years ago, I was a liaison to the ag comm when we had liaisons. And I don't remember who was alternates and if they were pa- participating. I think generally, um, they would participate in a lot of the discussions and everything. And then obviously, as far as voting, they weren't voting members.
Oh, excuse me.
Um, but I don't remember who was alternate, who was full member and how it broke out.
Hmm.
Um, I guess I'm a little confused by some of the language.
Okay.
This is an agricultural commission. In which the people that sit on it are people who understand agriculture and who are pushing for the value of agriculture. So, when I read section three B, it says, a minimum of three members shall be actively engaged in agriculture. Why are we having people sitting on that committee who aren't really in invested in agriculture?
Doesn't mean they're not invested, it means they are not currently, at the moment.
Farmers.
Actively engaged in agriculture. And agriculture in section one twenty-eight, one A is inherently a commercial enterprise.
Okay.
So, if someone sold his or her farm, they would not be actively engaged in agriculture. But they would certainly have the background to sit on a commission.
Or there's, uh, I, I don't know specifically in Rutland, but I think other communities have people that are um, involved not as uh, actively involved in agriculture in town, but involved at the state level or um, local, kind of local access and everything like that, local food access or local merchandise access. So, um, they don't necessarily have the active, ongoing backgrounds. But they have a broader policy idea also.
So, the alternates do not have to be actively engaged in agriculture?
That is correct.
Okay. Seems weird.
I don't know the history of it, it's been there from the beginning.
From the beginning, two thousand and six or whatever?
Yeah, and and so, I, I don't know enough to say if it's a good idea or not. All I can say is that ag comm has reviewed this.
I think, and I could be speaking, I think historically, it was tough to have um, farmers and people actively engaged in, in agriculture to be able to consistently guarantee meetings based on what time of year it was and everything. So, by having um, alternates, um, providing an opportunity for them to still have a quorum and, and make decisions if needed. Um, looking right now, there's um. Tamika is correct, we have two alternates. Um, one is very active, has a very active background in um, agriculture. And one is interested um, in more in the, the um, conservation of um, kind of sixty-one A and everything.
Hmm.
So, I, am I, that's.
I agree, yeah.
For the alternates, what about the other members who are on the board, the quote active?
Uh, all, all four, we have four members, there's an open, full seat open. All four members are actively involved in agriculture.
Okay. Okay. What happens when you go below three actively engaged members?
Uh, they would not be allowed to.
They couldn't make decisions.
Well, they couldn't make quorum, basically, cause they can't meet the requirements of the law. So, someone would have to get someone else who is actively engaged, uh, appointed by this board.
So, it's not really a big issue then?
Hasn't been.
In terms of if they have six or seven people on the board, then if th- if three of those, even though they're alternates, are actively engaged, there's still enough there to. Does an alternate have the power to vote and everything, if the board doesn't see them?
Only if they're seated to make quorum.
Okay.
I think currently, the two alternates, I think generally attend a lot of the meetings. Um, and like I said, historically, this is one of the boards that it seems like, um, the alternates remain as engaged as the members.
Okay.
Yeah, I was at an ag comm meeting recently and I believe there were six people present.
Yeah, I attended one and I think there was like seven or eight there a year ago when I was there attending that one. Okay.
So, does MGL state, um, does MGL state that the, a minimum of three have to be actively engaged or is that our bylaw?
I believe that's our bylaw.
Okay.
Uh, but in truth, I don't remember it that well.
I, I.
I didn't read it till I, till I, which I should have done.
I'm not gonna get through all of eight L to, um, but I was just curious because kind of looking for, forward looking. While I hope that Rutland is able to maintain that level of farming community sense and everything. We look at what has been happening over the recent decades with our farming community and our agricultural community. And um, it's not as.
Vibrant?
Vibrant as, as it once was and just kind of forward thinking, so.
Okay, that clears that up, thank you.
You're welcome. What do they do? Fundamentally, I think their biggest responsibility is, or more, most often used is for A, commission shall encourage the pursuit of agriculture and agricultural-based economic opportunities. I don't think B is far behind it. Commission shall act as mediators, advocates, educators, and or negotiators on agricultural issues. So, ag comm, for example, should be involved whenever there are conflicts with the right to farm bylaw. When some residents believe one thing and other residents believe another thing, they should act, it should be some of the people acting as mediators.
Okay.
Do we need to specifically call out that they should be involved with right to farm bylaw or?
Why don't we talk about that in the right to farm bylaw? If, if I may be so bold. Uh, commission should, so, a lot of this is, the commission is fundamentally a, uh, marketing. I hate to call on this, cause there are more than this, but they're fundamentally a marketing organization. What are the marketing opportunities? How do we get people involved? Pe- bring people into agriculture, attract them and keep them. So, a lot of this goes along that way. Commission shall coordinate agricultural-related activities with other governmental bodies or unofficial local groups or organizations that promote agriculture. So, again, they're the advocates and negotiators, much like in B. Ah, D is one with no teeth, the commission shall work towards preservation of agricultural lands. I have an idea what that is supposed to mean and I know what we have not, what we as a town have not been able to do. So, we effectively tie ag com's hands, but moving on.
Why, why, why would you say that's no teeth on that one?
Because there's no money to preserve it. In order to preserve land, you have to do one of a, one of a few things. You have to buy the property and keep it in sixty-one A. Or you have to get a, a, an APR, an agricultural preservation restriction put on the land and that costs money. Everything caught, that we need to, anything we can do to, to actively or proactively protect agricultural land requires money. And we have not been funding any of that for a very long time, I'll just say for a very long time, I won't say we haven't ever, I know we have some. But not for a while.
Number one, their job is to get out there, inform the public and all this stuff, promote agriculture, bring people into town for the farming community and all that. And now we're saying they also should go out and look at preservation of agricultural land. And I guess the question is why? Because we have all these other communities or organizations out there whose job is, or who looks to the preservation of agricultural land.
No, I don't believe you are correct, Harry, I'm sorry, because when you look at the land trusts, the land trusts are not fundam- are not primarily.
Agricultural based.
Agricultural in their purpose. That is no more than secondary and sometimes it's not even a list, they'll help out when they can, but it's not their charge.
And yet, we just went through a sixty-one A. In which agriculture was looking for the town to buy the land. So, how does that not conflict? When they're looking for money from the town to buy something and yet their job is also to get out there and inform the public of agriculture. So, there seems to be a two-sided coin here to me.
So, for six.
They have multiple distinct duties is the fast question, that's the answer.
Yeah.
And if I may, for six, for sixty-one A, the town gets the right of first refusal, so it has to come before the town. The town can then sign over or authorize a, an agent to act on their behalf, like a conservation or trust or a land trust or something. But, um, it's, I mean, agriculture, ag comm had made the recommendation that the town look for ways to purchase that, that the one that just came up that we were, are speaking about, to maintain it as agricultural space that they're using. I think it's currently hayfields to maintain it as agricultural space, um, to keep it in sixty-one A. Um, and so, it's, I think, uh, the town as a whole is the one that gets, we, select board acting as beha- on ta- as town makes that, is the ones that are charged with the right of first refusal. And then whether or not it gets kind of deeded somewhere else with the stipulations that X amount stays within as agricultural open space, farming, whatever the delineation is.
So, I guess that leads me to, so it has to be agricultural land to begin with.
Yes, otherwise it's not preserving agricultural.
So, sixty-one A doesn't necessarily mean it's agricultural land.
No, I believe definitionally it is, cause there's, there's sixty-one, sixty-one A and sixty-one B. And I don't remember all of them, but one of them, I believe B is for, is forestry?
Forestry.
Recreation.
He is recreation.
Yeah.
Then six, straight sixty-one is forestry, forestry and B is agriculture. So, it has to be agricultural land to be under sixty-one A. Now, it's forestry land to be under sixty-one B. Sorry, so straight sixty-one.
Okay. I, I, I guess I'll, I'll get my head around it, but it's like, just cause it has a title of sixty-one A doesn't necessarily mean that it is agricultural land. It has been set aside as agricultural land, that doesn't necessarily mean that it is.
In order to get the tax, um, in order to get the, the tax, um, it, it's supposed to be active, it's supposed to be actively farmed.
Okay.
So, let, let me back it up and say, from one perspective, you are exactly correct, Harry. Cause sixty-one A is a tax designation, it is not a pure land use designation. And so, the implication is, as Leah says, that they are using it for agricultural land. But it could be agr- land that has historically been agricultural, that is currently not being farmed. That's possible. Lots of fields go fallow for, for good reason.
Does it stay that way or does it have to be renewed?
What, sixty-one?
Yeah.
Sixty-one has to be renewed periodically, I don't know, five years, three years, five, I think. But I don't remember, I shouldn't say.
Didn't this come up e- a few years ago when soccer wanted the fields up by?
Yeah.
And they were haying the long, they were just letting the grass grow, cause it wasn't being used. But wasn't that an issue back then, cause it wasn't technically agricultural land, it was just being.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be agricultural land, there was a, there was a haying contract for that site. And that's what would, that's what prevented soccer for the, for that time period.
And it's designated, that field was designated as prime agricultural soil, which is, which is a different.
A whole different bailiwick, yeah.
Right, but that's a designation that the state contests the soil and then deem it prime agricultural land based on its nutrients and, and how to maintain that and everything. But yeah, there was a, yeah.
Yeah, I just remember, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of land in town, I think, has been hayed and when, when not being used. But I, I think what, I don't mean to speak for you, Harry, but I think what your point is if, if it's not technically a farm or farm land that's being farmed.
Right. You're not haying, you're not raising cows, you're not running sheep.
Right, right, but I, I think it's a kind of a.
That's why I said, you know.
A- any soil, if the right person tests it, could probably be agricultural soil.
I will say sixty, this chapter sixty-one stuff is also, um, for lumber and forestry. And so, sometimes, I know, I, my naivety when I moved to town was that, how is the sixty-one A, it's, it's forest. But they grow to a certain, and then they go in and are supposed to ethically and responsibly.
Right, there has to be a forestry plan, there are ways to go, there are ways to approach what you cut and how often, and how often it's cleared out.
Right.
That's sixty-one, not sixty-one A.
Exactly. But it's still chapter land.
Yes, it is still checked.
Yep.
But that's not MGL.
What, which one do you mean?
Is that a, is that a town authorized bylaw D or is it?
What do you mean, D? I, I believe D is from MGL.
Okay.
A is straight from MGL, I believe B is ours.
And I will say, referencing back to the chapter one twenty-eight, section one A, where it defines the farming and agricultural. It calls out a whole host of opportunities that.
Oh, yes.
That are, that are kind of not only the ones that we think of, or I think of as traditional farms.
In this town, yeah, absolutely correct.
Exactly.
Ag, ac- agricultural, aquacultural, citicultural, horticultural, there are a lot of culturals in there.
Even fur-bearing animals, bees, um, yeah, forestry lumbering operations.
Interesting. So, um, C, I believe is from MGL, D is, I believe, from MGL.
I mean, I think E is absolutely important in that one, I mean, pursue initiatives to create, maintain a sustainable, absolutely, that I understand.
Yeah. And. Oh, no, that's right, in fact, based on my notes here, yes, B is from M, from the latest edition of eight L, as is E. Excuse me, F, my mistake. F is absolutely our, from MGL that we added for consistency.
I know this is something that I kind of push when we receive notification, when the town receives notification of land coming out of chapter. Um, that MGL designates the boards and commissions that it absolutely has to go to. And I've tried to push that a number of other boards and commissions in town also receive notice and are able to provide opportunities. And in my head, I was floored that agricultural, an ag comm was not designated by the state if it's coming out of chapter land, which is designated as agricultural, some sort of a agricultural opportunity use. And so, I don't know if there's value to putting in bylaws or if it's better as a policy. Um, but I mean, it kind of goes hand in hand with shall work towards preservation of agricultural lands
Mm-hmm.
in the sense of they make a recommendation as to, but more explicitly kind of formalize and codify that.
I would have to think about how to integrate that in a way that's consistent with the rest of the way the bylaws are laid out, that's.
Yeah, 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 and that's why I'm wondering if it's better to do it as a policy, because it's not only ag comm, but
Yeah.
to me, ag comm, I was floored that the state doesn't say if you have an agricultural commission that they are required to receive official notice also because it's chapter land, like.
But you, we do anyways, the board notifies them anyways, right?
Yeah.
We do it by policy today.
We do it, but, but it's, I don't even think we have an official written policy as far as what boards and commissions. I know when I first was put on the board, ag comm, when I first was elected on the board, ag comm wasn't receiving, consistently receiving notices of land that was coming out of chapter, um.
Uh, we do have somewhat of a written policy, because in it, it lists all the commissions or boards that you submit to, but it's inadequate. There should be a lot more added to it.
Right, well, that's what I, I think it's been a little bit of an ad hoc policy and not a, a formalized voted upon.
Oh, yeah, it was. So, it was drafted, I'm sorry, if I may, it was drafted by the assessor.
Okay.
Um, and then adopted by the select board, I think, fall of last year.
Yep. Yeah, I think we did.
Um, so if, if, you know, it didn't fit properly in the bylaw, you could always amend that chapter policy too.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, I think, I do remember that and I remember that we had some conversations around, was it complete or not?
Yeah, it went back and forth a few times.
It was a first step.
Yep.
In the process, I think, so.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm just gonna follow back up around to the right to farm bylaw as far as putting that as a duty. When, if we're reading bylaws and trying to figure out what my job as an agricultural commission member is or if I'm appointing an agricultural commission, commission member, then I think having, my personal opinion would be having some reference to the right to farm bylaw here, uh, would be important. But I don't, we haven't gotten to the right to farm bylaw yet, so.
Yep.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
While we're talking, it might be more of a policy question, but just, it got me thinking with ag comm being involved in the sixty-one A discussions or being notified. I'm curious as to, to thoughts on, um, other, I like thinking of the agricultural, is it the accessory bylaw that we've been talking about more recently? Have they been involved in any review of that or can they?
I can't answer that, that's a zoning bylaw.
Can they even be involved in discussions or anything associated with use of that?
There's no reason they couldn't, there isn't any reason they shouldn't be involved.
Right.
Jen, they did participate with the Planning Board Bylaw Subcommittee in drafting that bylaw.
Okay, all right. And what about any, anything related to site plan requests or do they have any authority to participate in those discussions?
I don't know that they don't, but they did, they didn't, historically, they've not, for the, the three, four site plan approvals that have gone through Planning Board, ag comm has not participated in that conversation.
Okay.
To be completely fair, it's unclear to me that ag comm was explicitly invited to any of those reviews.
That's a fair point, yep, that's a fair point.
I was just gonna say.
And, and so, there may be value in that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I think that's one, s- some of our conversation as far as the need to look at that ex- ag accessory use bylaw. And like more comprehensively, now that we have had a few in, that we have, I think, four in town. Um, and we know that they're all different and we've seen kind of what, what feedback, issues, concerns, what's been working, what needs to be modified.
Hmm.
And that's. Um, and that's uh with planning board and the planning board zoning.
Now, we do have to be careful because planning board is an elected board, and so. But on the flip side of that is there had been discussions with, in planning board recently about policies that they don't have, that they need. And I think this could easily be another one of those policies to help reinforce that other boards in town.
That's.
Should be involved in some of these discussions and make it more explicit.
Oh.
That's my opinion anyway, that's up to them to decide.
I I think that's kind of where I was, what I was thinking too, just from, you know, hearing what all the, you know, the farms in town, if they're opening up their, their use for these other types of events for. Income for whatever it is, you know, are they truly using it as it's intended for agricultural purposes? And the commission is the one that's supposed to advocate for using those lands the right way, if you will. So is there some involvement that they might have as far as policies or cases?
Yeah, I mean, in in terms of using, I'm sorry, in terms of using the land the right way, um. That's sort of a stipulation of the bylaw that, and it's, and it's up to the planning board to ask the question, is this use truly accessory? Or is it, or will it interfere with the agricultural use? I'm not in the position to say, but. But those questions are all supposed to be asked as part of the review during that, during the process before they get a permit.
So you think something would, like, something along the lines of involving agcom in those discussions, would that be more policy related, nothing really to?
Yes, absolutely, that's, and that would have to be a planning board policy.
Bylaws, okay. Okay.
Ah, powers, I believe that all of these are taken straight from eight L, the newest version of eight L and put here for reinforcement, so everybody knows the powers. So, they can get grants, whether it's private or governmental. They can receive gifts, which is again, surprisingly enough, new, but it's new because of C. Commission may buy, hold, manage, license, or lease land of a party for agricultural purposes. That's the real, the real need of it, of their, of their more recent added power, their ability to hold land.
So is this similar to how conservation, conservation commission can be deeded land for conservation purposes?
Yes.
And so this is similar in that sense that I, an agricultural commission could be, could hold deeds to land.
Yes.
But then they're managing for agricultural purposes.
Now, this is one of the problems with eight L. Because they can hold, in fact, this is fascinating, if you, there is a big difference between mass general law and C. In C, we specifically limit it to agricultural purposes, because eight L says, hey, guess what, you can do it for recrea- they can hold it for recreation as well. And that creates, in my mind, a conflict between the conservation commission and its powers and duties and the agricultural commission. So we act, we we purposely had this limited to agricultural purposes so that there isn't a conflict for. You know, a fight between the commissions about who owns the land. And oh, I hope it would never happen, I hope this also prevents it.
Would, would there be more clarification, Peter, because from my understanding, the board has control over all leases, contracts, and so forth. They have to come through us for final approval.
Not anymore.
Okay, that, okay, that's an issue for me.
That is a new section of MGL that says they'll, they're allowed to do all those things.
Okay.
Because they can do it directly, they don't have to come through your approval.
Unless they're using town money.
Right, unless they want um the town's money, right.
That's all, allocation of funds is a, appropriation of funds is a whole other topic, but.
But because they can receive gifts, bequests, or devices of money or personal property.
Mm-hmm.
They, if they, if somebody were to gift.
Four hundred thousand dollars, like this last property.
To agcom, exactly, and then they wanted to spend that money to purchase that, because that was bequested to them.
Mm-hmm.
Then they can essentially do it.
Now, what I can't answer today, cause I haven't looked into it, it's deep and it's ugly and nasty, is would they have to go before town meeting to. To actually spend the money to purchase the land?
Right.
I don't know, it wouldn't surprise me if that were in fact still required, because it is a substantial allocation of of funds. For a capital expense.
But if it's not town funds, if they're receiving gifts.
If it belongs to the commission, it belongs to the town, it's effectively earmarked.
Yeah.
So that only the commission can spend it, in the same way that we have the PEG fund for cable, only the cable committee can spend that money.
Still has to get a.
But it's still, it's in a found town fund, it's allo- it's managed by the treasurer.
Yeah.
Who does MCL say owns that property that they now hold and manage?
Because they hold, they own, because they buy, they own.
So town has no liability or responsibility for any land that is being held through that commission?
Hmm, I'm not sure I would agree with that assessment, though, in the same way that the land that for, the land that the conservation commission holds is still. And when you look at it the right way, it's still town land, it's just.
So.
It's under the care and custody.
So, that's right, so it'd be under the care and custody of agcom, but if there were a liability issue, it's still a town liability.
So, the town has no control over that property, to hold, manage, lease, they can do pretty much anything they want. And the town has nothing to say about it, but can be sued if something goes wrong.
Perhaps, and again.
And that's MGL.
So MGL, eight L, section G is, speaks specifically to this, I don't, I mean, I can read the entirety of it, but I.
Yes.
A commission may receive gifts, bequest, or devices of personal property or interest in real property as described in this subsection in the name of the municipality. Subject to the approval of the city council or board of selectmen, as the case may be, the commission may purchase interest in land only with funds available to the commission. City council or a town meeting may raise or transfer funds so that the commission may acquire in the name of the mu- of the municipality. By option, purchase, lease, or otherwise, the fee in the land or water rates, conservation or agricultural restrictions, easements, or other contractual rights. As may be necessary to acquire, maintain, improve, protect, limit the future use of, or conserve, and properly utilize open spaces in land and water areas within the municipality. The commission shall manage and control the interest in land acquired under this subsection. The commission shall not take or obtain land by eminent domain. The mission shall adopt rules and regulations governing the use of land and water under its control and prescribe civil penalties not exceeding a fine of one hundred dollars for violation.
That answers that question, but it still doesn't, in my mind, answer the control question of who. If they can do all that stuff without anybody's oversight or approval.
Well, it even says right there.
Cause the state says we can do it.
Hold on.
I'm not, uh, you know.
Somewhere it says appropriated by the town.
If, right, but there's also gifts in there and everything else that is buying property.
But but even.
Is under, that is under the liability of the town.
But as I said, I I suspect quite strongly that in order to purchase it, you even from, even using gift funds, it still has to go before town meeting.
Yeah, so a good, a good example is that park grant that the commission wanted us to apply for.
Yeah.
Um, the regulations of that grant is that you actually have to go to town meeting first, appropriate the whole sum. And demonstrate back to the granting authority that you have the money, God forbid something happens, you have the money to pay for the project. Um, so there needs to be some sort of a coordination with board of selectmen and town meeting, uh, for the acceptance of grants. And with, in accordance with the grant acceptance policy, um, the board has involvement in that process as well.
I understand that.
Oh, actually, actually, if I may, Harry, the very first sentence. May receive gifts, bequests, or devices of personal property, interests, blah, 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 blah. Subject to the approval of the city council or board of selectmen, as the case may be. So they can't just get it, it still has to be approved by the select board.
To accept.
I'm I'm looking down the road and thinking about, commission has funds, they're buying this, they're managing it, they're doing everything. But at some point, if we, if we have to have three people who are involved in agriculture, and now we need alternatives because someone. I'm not so sure that going five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, unless we want to redo this again. That not having any oversight on their management of the property is what the town really thought they were getting. Cause that's a separate entity we're giving, we're giving them a separate checkbook, so to speak, or a separate entity, you see what I'm saying?
They they have the power, they have it today.
By MGL.
By mass general law, they have the powers today.
And it needs to be still agricultural based in, I mean, this is agricultural conservation.
Right.
Well, it still has to, yeah.
But it still needs to maintain a level of use that it currently.
And it currently is, and again, subject to the approval of the board of selectmen.
But not when they manage it.
It's at one point, at what point you have to trust the people you have appointed to do their jobs?
I'm not worrying about trusting the people, I'm worrying about down the road.
Even down the road is the same problem, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, I mean, yes, we should trust the people, but we've also seen by not asking questions or doing things. That things may not get done the way they should get done too, that's this board's responsibility and oversight. But I'm just trying to clarify that MGL has said the select board, when it comes to managing, when it comes to, we have no oversight on that. According to MGL, I just wanna clarify that.
Yes.
Okay.
Furthering what Harry said, if farmer Brown decides to give up some of his land for solo fields, then what happens with that land? Does that still stay sixty one A?
No, as not agricultural use, it is.
That's right.
It is a different use, so it must come out of sixty one, and therefore the right of refusal must become before the select board.
Okay.
Just taking it out of sixty one to do solar.
Depending on what process, depending on what process they follow, because they can let it last.
No, no, there are two processes for a sale versus just ta- removing it from sixty one.
Right.
Or one of the other chapters, there are two different processes, but to remove from six, from any of the sixty ones involves.
Yep.
The select board's involvement.
Okay, alright.
Conversions.
I'm sorry?
It's con- con- conversion.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're going to intend to sell or convert.
Yep.
I.
And so, and one thing I would add here is, um, if a commit, so, uh, we just got a request for purple, or a request for quotes from the cable commission. Um, so anything that's related to procurement has to fall through, uh, the town administrator's office, because no one else is the chief procurement office other than ours. So if the ag commission was, or another commission was looking to go to bid for something, uh, for the improvement of the agricultural land. There would be staff and board involvement on that process as well, so there is some kind of checks on those fronts. So if if you're worried about future boards getting land and then doing things or or perhaps not doing things with land. Um, we have obviously some, some checks there through other aspects of mass general law as well.
I guess my, my really, my concern is, we don't have a lot of agricultural land. And what we do get and we do keep, I just wanna make sure it is done right. But if what we see as a board is taken away, is taken out of our hands, then I can sleep at night saying, okay, not our problem. We didn't, we're told we can't touch it, so.
I mean, I would argue that the agricultural commission is charged, one of their main charges is to preserve, to promote and preserve agricultural land. And I would argue historically, um, depending on the makeup of the, of this board or other boards. There, that is not a priority of the boards, and so having agricultural land that is deeded to an entity that is charged with. Um, promoting and preserving that function, I think is. Is proper.
Is of value.
Is proper and value, because I think there's been different boards, select, different makeups of select boards that feel the town shouldn't own any property. And so if the town were to get a, a nice big piece of farmland, that the town, select board feels we shouldn't be holding on to this, we should sell it. And then it's gonna go to the highest value, which may not be agricultural.
Mm-hmm.
Then the farm, the the town loses that farm and it is not promoting or preserving.
Yep.
So I think, I mean, I think it's the, it's in their charge that if they're receiving this land, that it needs to be kept as, as such.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
I don't know.
And I think just the makeup of the commission members, especially those that are actively engaged in their own farmlands, that they have a sense of.
Well, I don't think, yeah, for me, I was in farming a long, long time ago. Uh, but for me, if you're a farmer, you're in agriculture, yes, you should know what to do with the land. And I'm saying that, well, maybe we'd like to take a look at that once in a while and see, is that really what's happening? That's really our charge for the town, to make sure things go the way they should. But if MGL says, keep your hands off, then we keep our hands off. And I just find that funny, that they would tell a town, they have no authority in some of that stuff. And yes, you could say procurement, but that's not the same thing. But it is what it is.
I'm reading D right now, and I'm thinking, I don't know how that got past council. But any acquisition of property by the commission shall be subject to select board approval when future town, I would have, I would today write appropriation. May be required for such properties. And I think for everything except a gift, the town meeting appropriation is required.
I think so.
But if, even if it were a gift, and the commission knows that we're, that they're going to have to spend money to. Make the land appropriate for agriculture or make it again appropriate for agriculture, that would be a town meeting expenditure. And therefore that acquisition would require select board approval.
Instead of may be required, you're saying it shall be required?
No, when future town appro- appropriation may be required, because it, you make it soft to cause more select board review, not less.
Okay.
If it was a shall, if they could say, I don't know if it's gonna be, so because I don't know what's going to be, they don't have to go before the select board. That's a, that's a dangerous way to write a bylaw.
Okay.
But you're right, Harry, I mean, to the end, at the end of the day. They, assuming they they acquire property, they will be able to lease it, one would presume they would lease it to an agricultural entity. But it doesn't say that that's necessary, could they lease to the soccer fields, to soccer? There's nothing that I've seen that says they must.
Wasn't that.
It is, it is against, in I, in my opinion, to go back to what Leah said, it's against their charge, because the charge is for preservation of agricultural land. But there may be some trade offs, which I haven't thought of.
But it's right here in C.
In C, yeah.
Man.
It states that they may buy whole advantage license or lease land to other parties for agricultural purposes.
Oh, true, for agricultural purposes. Right.
So they couldn't just lease it for ball fields or.
Well, that's true, that's right, they can just do ball fields, good.
That's, if they acquire it and they wanna lease it out, it has to be for that purpose.
Right, well, again, this is where, this is where it gets the difference between MGL says and what our bylaw says, cause the MGL says.
I think MGL.
They could do this for recreational purposes.
Recreation, conservation, and agriculture.
And then. Right, and so that they could get something that is agricultural and lease it as recreation, cause there's nothing that prevents that. But with this, you're right, I forgot that.
Okay.
And that's it for agcom.
Small batch of wording, but very impactful.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Moving on to the bylaw committee. So this is actually smaller than it used to be, because number one, we, all the sections that are in the appointed committee's bylaw. Have been removed from this, just as they've had from every other. Um, and in addition, there were sections in here that were targeted towards the select board, the select board will sub, will. Submit, transfer something, proposed bylaw changes to the bylaw committee for review before town meeting. Proposed bylaw changes to the Bylaw Committee for review before town meeting.
Right.
Those things, those are duties of the Select Board, they've all been moved into the Select Board. So this is a fairly small bylaw, I'm happy to say. Uh. Five members staggered three-year terms and Town Clerk and Town Administrator shall be ex officio members, okay, non-voting. And then it directs them to meet once a quarter.
Can we move the meetings into duties and responsibilities, just because I don't think any other, um. Of our bylaws explicitly say how often they need to meet and it technically is a duty and responsibility, I don't know what the rationale was behind having it as a separate. Um, I'm just looking again to try to streamline and everything.
Ah, I could, I can see that being a duty.
And under definitions where it says change, is that, this is a.
Hmm?
Definitions, oh, I got you, never mind. Sorry. My brain was not computing what, um, what I'm writing.
It's okay. So the committee shall assist any town official when requested in drafting changes of the town's general bylaws. The committee by majority vote may assist any resident when requested in writing in drafting changes of the town general bylaws.
Peter?
Yes.
Do you, have you had those requests from citizens to change bylaws? In your tenure?
Uh, in my tenure, a- as, as consultant to the Planning Board Bylaw Committee. There was a request from a citizen that was never acted upon.
Okay. I'm just thinking that if any citizen can get you working on something, eventually if it goes through, we've gotta pay an attorney to do it. So I'm trying to figure out what kind of citizen, that's why I ask you, would be involved in helping you change a bylaw.
I actually think there's huge value to having it go, try to go before the committee, um, any committee, because I think that it can be. If the committee deems that it's a worthwhile, um, consideration, that it can be fully vetted and follow the proper. Channels as far as public information sessions and everything, as well as legal review and everything. I really struggle when we get citizens petitions in for, we've had them for zoning bylaws, not, not for general bylaws. But I really struggle with that because there's been no, um, there's been very limited outreach to the public and time spent on drafting. Um. The entirety of it and looking at kind of all angles and then legal review also.
And and you're right, looking at it from a lot of angles is a, is a major responsibility, may not explicitly be said, but that's the broad. Understanding of bylaws and how they apply and how they interact is a responsibility of the Bylaw Committee and. I hate to use this word, but an ordinary resident won't have that view.
It just brings back to mind that situation where. Uh, it had to do with the, uh, fingerprint bylaw, somebody in the town was at, and wanted the bylaw changed and that. That was where I was coming from, like a citizen approached and wanted that done.
Yeah. But I still think there's value in having, as Leah said, everything she said, I believe is right about the value to the town of having the Bylaw Committee involved early. And not late in the process.
Yeah.
And it says may assist, so.
That's right.
Um, the committee would have to vote to, that it's a worthwhile conversation to pursue, it may not.
Exactly.
Be the form for which the resident submits, but they're willing, if the committee is willing to work with the resident.
Oh, I think, yeah, it should be open, should be absolutely transparent if somebody wants to have a request, absolutely.
I, I mean, if I can, so. I think fingerprint is one of those things that could easily have gone through the process as we, as we're describing it here and if I were to just. Reach out a little bit into some of the, some of the issues lately in town. I would think that if someone were to come to the Bylaw Committee and say, I want a bylaw that, that prevents, uh, raising birds. That the Bylaw Committee, if I were involved, would say, that is not a good thing, it conflicts with our right to farm and the philosophy behind it and having that. Breath will hopefully guide the Bylaw Committee to make decisions that make sense for the town.
Or we hear your struggle, how can we, we can work with AgCom or planning or or whatever.
Yep.
A little bit more know the players as to who to reach out to.
Is that something that should be in the bylaw or is that policy?
What's that?
B.
I hesitate to remove it because it, because it move. This is the difference between shall and may and that's the, to me, that's the important word and the important difference between those two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it, so could B be policy? Yes, it absolutely could. Whose policy is it? Cause the Select Board doesn't, isn't involved, so the Select Board wouldn't, there isn't a Bylaw Committee seated yet, so it's hard to say what policies they should or would.
Hmm.
I.
And I hesitate to direct an, an unseated board today about a policy that they should, that. Select Board believes should be written, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, I'm saying, I, I don't know.
I, I personally like having it as an option, I think there's, like I just said, a lot of value to it and so I. Like having it called out in, uh, the bylaw because it, to me, it codifies it, that the committee. As a charge of the, almost as a charge of the committee versus as a policy where, yes, you should follow it, but there may be instances in which. Um, and I like that if the committee votes to not assist, that they shall document in writing the reasons for such denial. And I assume that then there can be conversation if it were to go to a citizen's petition or something. Also, or that it's on file as to, we saw this and this is why we decided to not, not work on it.
If.
If, if I could just respond once, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Harry. I think B is important to have here because it turns into an advertising piece. It lays clear to the citizens that they, that they're allowed to at least ask the committee to do work. And if it's not, and if it's in a policy, it's not as obvious and as public, in my opinion. We have a hard enough time getting people to write, to read bylaws, it's that much harder to get people to read policies. So.
My question was, if the by majority vote, you will not take up their cause. What is their fallback? What is their appeal process or anything? Just come before the.
Citizen's petition.
Just come before the meeting of the Select Board and say, I tried and that was it and can you guys help us out? Basically, okay.
That or citizen's petition, I think if there was.
Citizen's petition would be, I would think, the way that they would go.
I would think that if it were a strong enough issue and the board felt that there, that there was strong value in it, then the board could have a conversation with the bylaw sub. Or the Bylaw Committee and say, we think that this is of value and can you reconsider? And if not, then it would be a citizen's petition, I, I would think, I don't know. For sure.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. See, the committee shall propose of the Select Board any general bylaw changes the committee determines should be made, that is to say. If you look at D, shall review all general, no, 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 that's the wrong one. Is there an F?
Looks kinda like what you.
There is an F, okay, so somewhere down below, there is a duty to periodically review the bylaws in the same way that the Ad-Hoc Committee is doing today. I believe it's every six years, because that's two, two appointment cycles.
Six years.
It's H right now in this list.
Right, so as part of that review, they will find, they, the Bylaw Committee will find things, they're gonna say, this should be changed. A court case has ruled that this section is invalid and we need to reword it or something else has happened, so. Committee proposes to the Select Board because of course the Select Board places it on, chooses to place it on the warrant or not. Committee shall review all general bylaw changes proposed by town officials, so A says, we have to help when asked. We, they, the Bylaw Committee, when asked, shall help, but if a town official goes off on their own anyway. Still says it has to go through the committee. And then E, which is mildly controversial if you think about it, but I think it's the best choice for the town. This committee shall review all proposed changes to general bylaws requested by citizen petition.
I think currently Planning Board is reviewing, um, zoning citizens' petitions, I think.
Yes.
Um, and I do think that there is value, like, the art, the petition would have to be placed no matter what unless the. The petitioner and the si- signees were okay to withdraw it.
Mm-hmm.
But I do think that there is value to having eyes on it because, um.
The whole, all, in, in my opinion, all general bylaw changes. Proposed at town meeting should have a recommendation from. The, from the Bylaw Committee as to whether or not it makes sense and so this is what gives that. Ability for, even if it's a very quick, not a lot of time. Uh, but it still gives the committee the ability to effectively discuss and make a, make a recommendation.
I'm. I don't have any, any issues with that, my, I'm more trying to, I'm thinking of closing the loop, so if it's part of the bylaws that the committee reviews. Every six years, that's a pretty big task, again.
Hopefully not as big as this last one.
Probably not as big.
That, you know, we know how many changes there are, because it's eighty years.
Right.
But we, we struggle in fact with the time period to do it, but yes, I'm sorry, I cut you off before you finish.
Right, so. No, no, but closing the loop meaning, you know, we're putting, putting the responsibility on the Bylaw Committee to do that review.
Hmm.
How do we close that loop to, like, do we need to add something to Select Board to state? If you have suggestions or changes for bylaw from the Bylaw Committee, how to ensure that those are reviewed and put on town meetings? So we don't end up kind of with a backlog of all these things that have been changed that don't get reviewed because. We don't have a nice, wonderful chair, chairwoman. That keeps us on our toes to review them and try and get them fast.
So I hear two different questions, I wanna make sure that I'm answering both questions that I'm hearing.
Yeah.
The duty of the committee to review the bylaws is clear in bylaw, so they are responsible for doing that.
Yep.
The duty to send proposed bylaw changes from anybody to the Bylaw Committee is a Select Board duty laid out in the Select Board bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So is there a hole somewhere that I'm missing?
Proposed, the board shall refer all proposed general bylaw changes to the Bylaw Committee.
Right. Yep. So that's you guys.
Yep.
So if you know of a change that's coming, you're obligated to send to the Bylaw Committee.
That's a long. So maybe it's the other way around, so during your six-year review, you come up with changes that need to be made. How do we ensure that the Select Board is reviewing them and actually pursuing getting those changes approved on town warrant?
We have adequate time to.
That's gonna end up being completely policy.
Okay.
Because. One can presume. Going back. To C. The six-year review occurs, they say, these are the changes we believe should be made. And. C says they have to send it to you.
Mm-hmm.
So then maybe we have a year Select Board, that potentially depending on the timing of everything, it could potentially be.
So.
The seventh year that the changes are actually made, but because they've been reviewed within the next six years.
Right.
That's right.
Right.
The, the, the Select Board bylaw cannot be dictated to put something on a town meeting warrant, they can't. That would be inappropriate, cause that's the very next step.
Okay.
Whether or not there is a, a complete, a very in-depth review by the Select Board is a policy.
Okay.
Whether or not the Select Board elects to, to put these, these proposed amendments on the town meeting warrant is policy.
Okay. Uh, that was, that's the answer.
So you don't, you don't really wanna, yeah, you don't wanna tie people's hands too much.
No, but I just.
What's, what's the old saying that the, that the law should be a comfortable suit, not a straight jacket?
But.
So we don't wanna tie, we don't wanna force people to do things they do not. As a matter of fundamental contract, don't, don't want or don't need to do.
Well, and I would, I would kind of counter that to say, if the Bylaw Committee is suggesting changes.
Doing the work.
Is, somebody needs to do the work to get those changes in place and that's up to the Select Board to ensure that that finally happens, so. I don't have a problem whether it's bylaw or policy, I just, it was just a question I had, like, what's the point of reviewing everything every six years and you making suggestions if. There's nothing that's dictating that the Select Board needs to take action, whether it's to say, we're not gonna adopt this or moving forward with. The process to, to adopt them.
That is true, and I'm also sure that a Bylaw Committee that is not being listened to by the Select Board will not exist as a Bylaw Committee for very long.
Sure.
It's, it's, it, there's a feedback loop there.
Why, why six years, Peter? Uh, let me, no rephrase, during that six-year period. Are, do you anticipate that the Bylaw Committee will be, if the Attorney General changes laws, they'll work on that particular issue and submit it to the. Select Board so we don't have to wait for forty of them in the end of six years?
That's, that's sort of the vision.
Okay.
That it's an ongoing. I. There's an ongoing recognition of the things that change, whether it get, they, they hear from Town Council, they hear from the Attorney General's Office, they hear from Town Clerk, cause she gets information, whatever. The point of meeting quarterly is that they are forced to examine what's changed every quarter. If they're just getting together saying, here we are, let's approve the minutes and adjourn, then they're not doing their jobs.
And we've had, I mean, we've had instances of bylaw. Changes or modifications or new bylaws added throughout, throughout the off, the off-cycles of the six years, so I think that. This is still providing the opportunity for that to happen and then also look contextually, holistically at the entirety of bylaws.
Hmm.
Over the course of six years to make sure that there's no redundancy or, um, complete, yeah.
conflict.
Yeah. And, and, and the reason I ask is, I, I hate, I mean, we've accepted the challenge of doing all these bylaws this time, so.
Sorry.
And they've had all these boards that could have been doing little, so I'm thinking. You wait till the six years are up for one more board to try to go through all this stuff again, it's like, no. But they can do that quarterly, you're telling me.
But I, I think they can do it quarterly and, and go as they go, but there is a value. So, go back, why six years? Cause that's two appointment cycles, so that you're going to, you expect to have some amount of turnover every three years. Cause it's a three-year term, so that's two appointment cycles. And the review is how everybody on the committee understands, completely reviews in depth every bylaw. So that there's a better understanding, that's the side effect of. A, a really, a real in-depth understanding is a side effect of having to do a review to make sure that nothing needs to change.
I would like to have a discussion at another meeting about if we're having this stuff done in February. And it gets to the Attorney General by, say, May. For their review.
Oh, no, 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 it's a month.
Oh, is, and everything is in place, then it has to. How are we going about making sure that we're gonna have a Bylaw Committee? That is what I think we need to discuss earlier rather than later.
Yeah.
I've talked a little bit briefly with Peter and Anita just to see how much staggering there should be versus, I think there's value to having some staggering with the. Ad hoc Bylaw Committee and then with a, with a Bylaw Committee, but how much and at what point and.
What's the overlap, when do you begin?
Yeah.
Make your decision. We're happy to work with people.
Or is it, if, if I understand currently, there isn't an appetite for the current ad hoc committee to be serving on the. Bylaw Committee.
That is my best feeling.
So my current concern isn't so much overlap, right now there is no overlap.
Yeah.
And that's one of my concerns after all the hard work we did.
No, but that's. I think appointing a, a Bylaw Committee. While the ad hoc by, the ad hoc Bylaw Committee. While the ad hoc by the ad hoc bylaw committee is finishing up the work is important. But also we need to make sure that we have clear delineations of roles and responsibilities and how that transition is going to work because.
Right.
Um it could it could get a little messy, but.
It it could. If there were conflict between what ad hoc bylaw committee believes should be in there and what. The permanent bylaw committee believes, that's gonna be a problem because both are gonna claim jurisdiction.
And and I understand there there could be that.
Yeah.
But we have no overlap.
No, you're right. And I I agree, there really there really ought to be. A a permanent bylaw committee needs to learn a lot.
Has.
And it's not just reading the bylaw, I mean, just the maintenance activities themselves, how you create the body of bylaws. How you put it up on the website. Those are all steps somebody needs to understand.
Because. But as we have this, the the amended or the edited bylaw committee. Bylaw bylaw in front of us now, we can think about for sure putting out a call. With a charge and putting out a call for membership because that's gonna take a little while.
Absolutely.
And then we can look to seat a a a bylaw committee and I would, this is just off the top of my head, I would say that the ad hoc. Committee is still charged with getting these revisions through that February town meeting. And then maybe there's some overlap, continue to overlap while it's reviewed by the attorney general and everything. Um and then then the bylaw committee takes over. I'm not, I haven't thought about the timing, but I think something along those lines.
Well, you do need to think about it because technically. The ad hoc bylaw committee committee disappears on February sixteenth. We have we have finished our charge. The charge says present to town meeting. That's the end of the charge. So up from February sixteenth, no matter what happens to the attorney general's office, now don't get me wrong, the committee. I believe has the appetite to go through and manage any comments from AG review. That's a great overlap period because there isn't formally a body to look at bylaw changes for annual.
Right.
Because February we disappear. Somebody wants to do something in March, there's nobody to give it to.
And and I guess my my only question or concern was, when do we start as a board looking at when we put that new committee in place or how we go about it?
Right.
Because we're running out of time.
Right, yeah.
So that was my concern. Not so much the overlap.
Well, and I think. Right.
As just.
Right, and it's been on my radar and I wa- wanted to get through this bylaw before kind of formulating a charge because I think we need to be. We as a board, not this board, but as a board in general, need to be better at formulating charges and membership. When we put calls for for committee membership out.
We don't have for this, we don't have a uh. What's the word I'm looking for? We don't have something that says, here's what you're doing, here's your responsibilities. No, I mean advertising the position.
Oh, no?
Okay. Okay.
But we can, Harry, on our new awesome website.
Oh, okay.
Right, that's the charge, right, which is basically taking the duties and responsibilities and making it a little bit more spruced up and.
Little friendlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can even, not to digress, but we can even put. Like a news flash box so that when you go to the homepage of the website, a box will pop up that says, looking for new members for our bylaw committee. Um or you can do it for certain pages if you're going to them, so you can kind of get the word out that way too.
Yeah, I just because I know what troubles we have getting people on the committee.
So we're gonna have lots of pop-up boxes.
What's that?
We're gonna have lots of pop-up boxes.
Yeah.
Looking for members, volunteer.
Make sure they flash, they have lots of animation, and all the most annoying boxes ever, most annoying website ever.
Yes. Who'll be confetti that pop up pops out?
Okay. I just wanted to just pop that out for the board.
No, I. No, no, and I appreciate it. It's been, you know, we've been talking about it informally, but it's good now that we have this in front of us that it becomes a a priority.
Yeah. Yep.
Committee shall report to town meeting its recommendations, blah, 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 blah.
I have a question for this one.
Yes.
Um so I I know we currently don't have a moderator bylaw and I feel like the moderator shall call upon that that. That sentence does not belong in the bylaw committee bylaw because there's not any. The bylaw committee doesn't have any power over that and that we should maybe.
If there were a moderator bylaw, yes, it would live there in the same way that it lives in the FinCom.
Right, that's.
And the same way that it lives in CIPC.
Yeah.
The same way it should live in planning, but I'm not sure that we don't have a planning board bylaw anyway. Um. Yep, I agree. But we're not gonna get a moderator bylaw for February. It's not happening.
So this will be the first chart, one of the first chart.
Yeah, it's a good one. And then there's the whole interaction with whatever charter committee you put together.
Right.
Because there needs to be interaction between charter and bylaws. After.
Are you saying we should pull the moderator piece now? Or no?
I think.
I'm not sure I understood.
I I just don't think that it be- belongs here. I think that they should be. Responsible for reporting a recommendation or not.
Yeah, the first sentence is is a pure committee responsibility and the second is a responsibility of the moderator.
Right.
And so it technically doesn't belong in this bylaw, but we don't have a moderator bylaw to put it in.
I mean, I guess I can see it staying there because if it's becoming, if it's on an article for the town meeting. The moderator in reality should call upon you to explain why you did this, voted this way or not.
I think right now, uh we've kept it, we've kept the same, essentially the same wording in the FinCom and CIPC.
Yeah.
So I think for right now, it stays here because it codifies that they that that more than they shall report.
Right.
To town meeting, it's it's calling it out.
Right.
That they formally are called upon to report, but um I think that it just. Should be in a town moderator bylaw, but we don't have that right now, so.
No, I I I agree, that's the.
Oh, I know, and oh, yeah, we do need a.
Yeah.
That is the long-term right place to put it.
Right.
Once we have that moderator, that'd be one of their quarterly meetings to talk about.
Right.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, having it documented in all the by in all the. Bylaws that it pertains to, at least then makes it easy enough.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or easier to go through and say, what are moderator responsibilities?
Yep. They've been proposed, they've been voted, they've been approved. Thirty days later than that, they go to attorney general's office. The attorney general's office responds in roughly three months. The committee shall review attorney general decisions regarding general bylaw changes. Sometimes, you could, at the end of the day, the attorney general's office says, yep, it's good. Says, yeah, it's close, but this section is a little problematic. Uh and. You should talk to town council about it to make sure the town is, I mean, to make sure the bylaw is managed properly. Three is. Uh we're taking out this section because it's wrong according to whatever reference they have. And number four is they completely throw it away. Three of those cases require some probab- well, two of them certainly require and the third one is likely to require a future amendment to the bylaw.
Peter, have they ever thrown one out completely?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Hasn't happened recently, but it has happened.
I was curious.
Uh in fact, unless I'm mistaken, the. I forget if it was the very first version of revolving funds or more likely the very first version of. Delinquent taxpayers was completely thrown out.
That's not what I would have anticipated either.
I know.
I would have thought you were gonna say like the marijuana bylaw or something like.
No, no, please, when I'm involved, they don't get rejected. They occasionally have to.
Oh.
Okay.
Hasn't yet. Hell, the last ones, no comments from the attorney general's office even. No, 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 there have been on. But for mine.
Oh, nobody likes a show-off, Peter.
I do aim for perfection. Uh. Committee shall conduct a complete review of the town's general bylaws to ensure consistently with changes to apply applicable law at least once every six years. Should also say. Well, court cases become effective law, so. Committee shall assist the town clerk in preparing the publication of the general bylaws. Committee shall assist with formatting, structure, presentation, et cetera, et cetera. When requested by the planning board, we help with zoning. We haven't been asked, we've done a little anyway. But in fact, it's a law. Well, no, never mind. I'll leave that a law.
Be nice.
No, no, it's it's no insult. I mean, they.
Yeah.
The 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 people who did the initial codification. And then all the amendments that have been made since then to zoning, it's freaking mess. In my none-too-humble opinion, we zoning should get the exact same review that we put all the general bylaws through. It's that much of a mess.
Yeah.
Excuse me, it's that difficult to read and understand and that makes it a mess to me, but moving on. Committee shall, whenever practicable, hold one or more public information and input meetings to discuss general bylaw changes. Purpose is to provide a forum for interested parties to engage in discussion and that is to say parties other than the town officials. Or the citizen who suggests it upfront. Such meetings shall be held no less than two weeks before town meeting when the changes are to be voted. Now, so everybody knows. I'm planning four public information sessions for this. Sundays, the Sunday, the four Sundays leading up to town meeting and there are gonna be my intentions to make them all exactly the same, but we'll see. So even we're doing this. Meetings shall be posted and published one week in advance, et cetera, you know, usual posting.
Yep.
Ah, the let's ignore process section, which is unfortunately critical. Failure to observe any provision of this article shall not affect the validity of any change in the general bylaws duly adopted by voted town meeting. Or prohibited town meeting from acting on this. If the bylaw committee can't hold a public information session. Doesn't matter in terms of the validity of the bylaw. If once it. Nothing about that process, any step that skipped doesn't ma- doesn't prevent it from coming before town meeting and doesn't prevent. The town from voting on it and therefore does not affect the il- the validity of the law.
MGL doesn't have anything regarding the process for general bylaws.
Correct.
Okay, because MGL has process for zoning bylaws, is that?
Your boy, do they.
Right.
No, nothing. And so. Because no, there is no process defined in MGL. Find documents that we could legally define one that would prevent it from getting to town meeting. Because that places an extra restriction on the on how how a proposal becomes law. That you can't justify in mass general law.
I guess I don't know enough about the process of mass general law and bylaws. I always thought bylaws could be more restrictive than MGL.
They can be, but they can't place undue restrictions on individuals. They can, I can't make a bylaw that places a restriction. On your. That that restricts your duties.
Right.
So therefore, I can't make a bylaw that restricts. Any person's ability to get to town meeting with a bylaw proposal. I can't write it. I don't think it's legal.
And I guess I don't, and I'm not necessarily, it's but for just for conversation's sake, if you were to follow a process similar to the zoning bylaws. Where there has to be public information defined, spelled out that that all has to happen. Um and it's rooted in the fact that we're following a process similar to zoning. I don't know, I would question if there could be a legal leg to stand on because it's not saying that it can't still get there.
Well, I put in two magic words, whenever practicable. In the public information session.
Right.
So by scheduling, there may not be possible to schedule something two weeks in advance. It depends on. When the bylaw comes in, if a citizen petition comes in and we have a short window between closing the warrant. And the town meeting itself, because that only needs to be two weeks and a day, basically.
Right, but citizens petitions are gonna have to be placed no matter what.
Yes, they are, but it still requires bylaw committee review. So if for some reason the bylaw committee can't meet its obligations under four.
How does it work for zoning bylaws then?
They have to find a time to get to to get a public hearing. They have to find it. There's no, there's no choice.
And so I guess I I fe- I think I'm leaning towards and I again, but I'm leaning towards general bylaws carry as. Are as important in some cases as zoning bylaws, so why are we not trying to have?
Because we can't but write a law that restricts someone else's ability to get on the warrant. We can't. In the same way that I can't force you to do things that are not, that I cannot write a bylaw that forces you. To do or not do things that by law you were required to do or to not do, I can't make it happen.
So. So you're saying because MGL, essentially because MGL does not touch general bylaws. We couldn't model a a town bylaw after the zoning bylaw pro- the zoning bylaw process.
I believe that is correct.
Even though there would be rationale that this is what the zoning pros- bylaw process is and we are following that because that's what that process is.
Because at the end of the day, you have to find a statutory enablement of that ability. Some statute in MGL or special law must exist for us to use it in our bylaws.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about, I think that there's. Very strong value to having public input on general bylaws, just as I do for zoning bylaws. And so that's, I think, where I'm struggling is that that the failure to observe essentially could mean that there could be bylaws. That the the select board bylaw committee are putting forward without any sort of public information sessions.
Hmm, without without bylaw committee review.
Right.
All of it. One hundred percent of it is an optional process.
I I guess I I agree in eh to an extent, but when it does go on. The town warrant, there is gonna be public discussion and review when it goes on the town board at that point. So anybody that didn't choose to come and wants to come to the town meeting will be able to see that. I understand your wanting to really get out there and have the people say, hey, this is coming, come on and sit there. But I I like we've discussed, I I I I don't know how that's gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree that a lot of the conversation, even for the zoning bylaws, happens at on town meeting floor and not at the information sessions.
Right.
But it provides an opportunity to hear, there have been some information sessions where there's been. Val- points brought up that I think may not have been considered just from a perspective of whatever. And so I think that there is value to getting out and especially when it's stuff that. Is functioning, could potentially impact the way government functions.
I mean, I I I agree. I think Peter's doing a great job of trying to get these out there for sessions. If one of them doesn't go, it's not gonna go. It could be a storm, could be anything that happens, you know. So but if we're giving them the opportunity to be there, and I think that's a, that's really what your intent is, Peter. I mean, you can't control who comes, but you're at least giving them the opportunity and then the last opportunity they have is at a town meeting, so. Boy, I struggle with how much more we can do.
Yeah, and I I guess I struggle and maybe it's more on MGL side of things that the. Planning board and zoning bylaws have all these stringent requirements and then here you can change the way government functions and. If the, you know, thirty people that show up to town, we have more than thirty people, but if the thirty people that show up to town meeting are okay with it and it passes and then suddenly. There's been no information about it, you know, that's I.
Well, then shame on the rest of the town for not partaking in.
Right, no. Right, but that's I think.
In their own town government.
And that has and that has been my concern.
Yeah.
When we started looking into the bylaws that. After all these years, twenty-three years, we have not given the public an opportunity. To really review the bylaws, the board hasn't done any review of the bylaws and that we've never had a committee in force to do review of the bylaws, so. You know, uh.
It's new territory.
Huh?
It's new territory.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, right.
But I do, I sympathize with you and I know how you struggle with MGL versus bylaws.
You probably know better than I do.
I know, I know you do. I know you do.
That's it for the bylaw committee. Okay. Council on A G I'm going to have to step down. So
I was gonna say, I think
Yeah, it's seven thirty, I have to
Seven thirty, I think, Jen.
Okay.
As well.
So I think we will try to see what our agenda is looking like and see. You're gone on Monday? Are you
Yes.
You're not here on Monday.
Correct.
So
This this coming Monday, the thirteenth? Peter?
Yeah, I'm I'm out of town after Tuesday.
We'll prove that.
The chair of the bylaw committee.
Um so we'll have to put a pause on formal reviews, but we can um I think we have some updated um follow-up items. We covered a few of them from our last meeting. I mean, there's still a few more outstanding and I think I don't think that there's a lot of homework. It's more kind of conversation with the by- the ad hoc committee, Peter, as far as how to work stuff in or not, whether it belongs or not, so um
So am I understanding correctly, we're not gonna put anything by law related on the November thirteenth uh regular agenda?
I think that that's um I I mean, Peter's not gonna be here. I don't know if Anita or anybody is here to
Right. No one else has a taste for doing this.
So I think we're gonna have to take a pause for right now.
Sure, that's fine. I just wanna make sure.
Rest of the board okay with that? I mean
We're gonna be under some pressure later on to get it done, but we're just gonna have to get it done.
It's what it is, yeah. I know.
That's that's an understatement.
That's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Should we pencil in the twenty-ninth? 'Cause the twenty-seventh is a regular meeting. So I would suggest perhaps placing it as a at least as a placeholder for the twenty-seventh.
I would not do the twenty-seventh because we have a huge agenda for the twenty-seventh, so I I doubt we would get to bylaws.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, 'cause it's time to do all the licenses and
We have Well, we have three public hearings along with schedules for that night, yeah.
Oh. Okay, okay. So
So the twenty-ninth tentatively then?
I was just the twenty-ninth we could schedule right now.
It's a Wednesday.
Oh. No, I can't. Table committee is meeting that night.
Just came up.
Okay, December four. There's four and or sixth.
The sixth is a regular meeting, I think, isn't it?
December fourth.
December? No. Uh you're going from the twenty s- twenty-seventh to the al- to December eleventh.
The December thirteenth, I'm sorry. Yeah, never mind.
So the fourth is free.
Okay.
Fourth has no use of this room. People will be should be generally available.
Fourth good for everybody, yeah?
I
That that's okay for me.
Yeah, I mean, we might have to end right at eight. I might have school committee for uh contact stuff, but um I should be okay.
I mean, six is open.
We do
Will waiting another month, Peter, allow enough time for everybody to get through everything?
Well, I was gonna point out that we have a significant time crunch because come on. We are halfway through five. And we still have to get through those two bylaws and then all five of those and some of them are really important. And don't do earth removal 'cause that's not getting changed. Stormwater management, that's stormwater management get can replace with three different bylaws by the time we're done. Oops, didn't mean to click on that. Audios restrictions, that's real. Animal control door-to-door, sanitary systems, right to farm, signs are not touching six, so there's still five five and two are seven, seven and five are twelve. Anywhere from twelve to fourteen bylaws to finish for review.
Stuck a chunk.
Okay. It does call, I mean, in my mind, just looking at the timeline. After you folks are done, it goes to legal review. And that'll take certainly a couple of weeks 'cause almost half of these town council is never seen before. Town council is only seen through chapter six.
Are we not considering Thursdays because FinCom usually meets on Thursday?
I have other Thursday, some other Thursday commitments. Thursdays are jet are half the Thursdays are open and half of them aren't.
So Peter, this is this is really about you.
Yeah, actually in December. In December Birthworks Board is not meeting, so Thursdays are not yet committed.
What about the November thirtieth?
That's open.
So it's Thursday. And then we could do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and just
Just lock it in the room.
That would be like an early Christmas gift to us all, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
We'll call it a retreat.
Yeah, right. Early Christmas gift, we'll be getting through them.
We'll do an all-day slum Saturday.
I feel like that's where we're headed.
I mean, I have thirtieth the open, so I'm I'm okay with having to. November thirtieth. But you said you couldn't, Peter?
No, I can't.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, what's your thirty is okay for me.
Can you do the thirtieth?
November thirtieth, yeah.
So November thirtieth and December fourth?
For now, and then and
Fourth, yes, okay.
Sorry, guys.
It's not your fault. It's not his fault.
No, it's mine.
It is Peter's fault.
It's all Peter's fault.
Yes. Yep.
Alright, well, at least I just wanna get them done. Sorry, guys. I
I know.
Really just wanna get them done.
Oh, so do I.
I appreciate everyone's willingness to get
We all, yeah.
No, I appreciate everyone's willingness to put the time in because it's a lot, I know and
I mean, we gotta move on. We have to make these time.
I, yeah, yeah.
Well, and and God forbid we don't, can we still act on what we can for the planned town meeting, special town meeting?
We will have conflicts.
Oh, oh, that's right, because there's some other ones that rely on, that's right.
But I we can look at them.
I just hate to, you know despite all the effort that's being put in, have to table a meeting if there's a way we can get through and push through some, even if that means reprioritizing some others that are required for
Just that winter's coming. There'll be no soccer, there'll be no anything on Saturdays, so.
When when I go back and think about it I don't know if there is a value to this group deeply reviewing the one stormwater changes or any of the stormwaters that come up. I'm not saying don't become unaware, but I don't know that there's a value to deep involvement and deep review of those.
Especially um the presentation from Weston and Sampson. There's a lot of things that need to be added to storm water that will not be ready for February.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
I was gonna say, I feel like some of them, we might just have to say that what is here is if it gets to that is is good enough for right now and it becomes a priority for the next for the bylaw committee and the next board.
Mm-hmm.
But or we get it on a May, the the May meeting, we put a couple more on if if they're ready.
Yeah. That's what I mean, yeah.
But um if we can get through as much as possible
Yeah.
In my mind, the the multi-member boards or whatever, Peter
Mm-hmm.
is really, I think and I don't know the ins and outs of all the other ones, but after that, they seem to be less dependent on each other, no?
Yeah, I I would have, I'm gonna have to review public ways to see if it makes a lot of sense. I think scenic roads, it makes sense for you to review. Connecting driveway review driveways to roads, I don't see as a big thing. Street names and structure numbers, I don't think are big deals. I can give you ten minutes on each to talk about what really changed. Who has responsibility for street names? That's changing. Does it matter? Well, it does, 'cause the current bylaw isn't being done. It the current bylaw is not being followed.
And it's changing because of?
Because bylaw is not being followed.
Oh. I thought maybe M G L, no?
'Cause they're not Uh no, I no, there 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 aren't very many M G L implications beyond. There's not very many. Um
Okay.
Uh but there were a lot of changes because remember part of our charge is is document and current practices.
Right.
Okay.
I'm I apologize, I have to
Yeah.
So
Alright, so I'd love to take
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was I was stuck under my stuff last time.
I would take motion adjourned.
I can remove.
Just a reminder, the um um memorial, war memorial dedication ceremony this Saturday at one P M. You can attend. Love to have you.
One o'clock?
Yeah, one o'clock. You have a motion by Harry, second by Paul. Roll call.
Second eye.
Matson eye.
Dray, Whitman eye. Seven forty.